Good morning and welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, number four of two thousand and five, this the twentieth of May twenty twenty five. Firstly, apologies for our delayed commencement, we had some technical difficulties in going to our live streaming, so we do apologise to those of us watching the live stream at the moment for our delay. If I can just advise that we have an attendance, myself obviously is the chair, we have councillors Augustine, the deputy chair of the committee councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Madden, appearing via teams is councillor deputy mayor Johnic and councillor Martin, and I have had a request for a leave of absence for the mayor, I would like to move that leave of absence and seconded by councillor Tully, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those, those councillor Martin and Johnic, we have, thank you, that's unanimous, thank you. I now ask councillor Augustine to read the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share, we pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you councillor Augustine. We now move to declarations of interests, are there any declarations on the agenda, for the agenda today, any of the items on the agenda? Councillors Johnic and Martin, any declarations?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you.
There being no declarations, we'll move to business outstanding, we have currently tabled infrastructure, sorry, capital investment and provisional projects, policies, some proposed amendments, can I just request an update, I understand that that one is yet to be presented for consideration and I believe next month it may be ready, but I asked the CEO and the GM, is there any further advice on that?
Thank you, Chair, that will be coming back next month, you are correct, we'll do a briefing with councillors first and then bring it back to committee.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No. Next item of business outstanding is, there was a question put at the last meeting, I believe, or the meeting prior, the eighteenth of March, in relation to Red Bank Plains Road intersection, that response has been included in the agenda today for noting, is there any further questions in relation to that? There being no further questions, we'll move to item one, sports facility fencing and electrical switchboard improvements for flood resilience? Is there any questions of the officers?
Yes councillor Antonelli.
Yes councillor Augustine?
Um, yeah, I've got a couple of questions for the relevant officer, did you want to know what?
Did you wish to put it to the GM or the relevant officer?
Oh, sorry, I forgot that, um, probably the relevant, I, I'll say the first question.
Yeah.
Um, for the Ipswich Knights facility, that's the road tree part, did we do, we did upgrades to their fence that was damaged, I just want to know, do we know what the costing of that upgrade was?
I'm not sure we'll have that answer right now, but I can check with the relevance officer.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair, Ben Pole, general manager, community cultural economic development, you're referring to the existing drop down fencing that's at the, at the Knights facility?
No, the bit that there was, because that wasn't damaged, there was the part, um, one part of the, the fencing was damaged, that wasn't dropped down.
Right.
And so we've, we've fixed that.
Has that been repaired? I'd have to take that on notice councillor, I believe so, I believe all of the, the damaged fencing has been repaired, but I'll, I'll have to confirm.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, where I'm going, Mr Pole is, I'm trying to work out if, the way I read the report is that to do the drop down fencing, it's about a hundred and thirty two dollars per linear metre, but the, the wire is a hundred and nine, so that's about twenty two ish, twenty three dollars difference, so am I right to say that we're trying, the report is like saying that that might be cost prohibitive for us to go to the drop down, is, I'm just trying to?
Not necessarily, it's, it's, what was requested I think was a, a, a cost comparison, that's been provided, it's a incremental increase on the standard fencing.
Yeah.
Um, I think that the recommendation from officers across multiple areas of council is that the drop down fencing be considered as a build back better measure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and potentially utilising the funding that we receive for flood recovery to, to actually do that build back better and use the drop down fencing where possible.
Okay, um, and so if we, so will that happen, when would that happen, we'd have to, so thanks Sarah.
Through the chair, so that sort of betterment is, or build back better is a different option to just a recovery, so we would have to apply for any specific grants to be able to do that.
All right, okay, and yeah, so I'm just looking, yeah, what's just happened with, yeah, that particular and how we go forward in a better way, because I know we've, we've, we've fixed it to the, the wire, not the drop down, so the Knights are now come back to us and got fifteen thousand to do the drop down, so it's like, just going forward, I was just trying to work out, we don't double dip, where we're, we're fixing it with wire, then we're saying to the club, come and apply for a grant and then fix it up yourself, sort of thing, so I'm just trying to work out a process.
I'm just, what I think I'm hearing, obviously councillor Augustine, I'm trying to understand the question you're asking, and the way I looked at this when I saw the first stop point on page thirteen of one fifty one, which I think relates to what you said before, the one thirty two per linear metre versus one oh nine, which is a twenty one percent cost differential. And the question I had is obviously, you know, with respect to the build back better concept, you know, if we were to have to, has these events seem to be more prevalent now? I'm wondering what the, the cost benefit would be in, if we had to replace these every five years, if there was a significant event every five years?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, and obviously at the moment, if we have fixed the fencing, there's no need for us to do anything at this time, but my question would be, are we looking potentially at this with respect to the build back better in the future if there is another event?
Yeah.
As to whether we would factor in that cost benefit of not having to replace the fence potentially every five years, let's pray that that is not the case.
Yeah.
With any event, but these, you know, there could be a cost benefit I would see, but is that the way we are looking at this as a council, potentially?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct, we would want to do that cost benefit analysis on these options to, so we, we would want to look at how frequently this is occurring and really work through that, those options to see, is it every five years, is it every ten years, what's the cost benefit and also the lifting and dropping of the fences, making sure it's clear who's, who's responsible for that if we went down that path?
Yeah, and within that cost analysis, do we, would we look at, I know it's an intangible sort of thing, where it's not actually a dollar figure, where I think councillor Antonelli and myself were there, where the drop down that they've already got took us a couple of minutes and we were back in, but the fence that was, um, damaged.
Impacted, yeah.
It took a lot of hours and, I'm going to say manpower, but it, you know, yeah, to be able to move, so do we, is?
And it was impacted greatly too by the velocity of the water, so there was significant damage in relation to the fence that couldn't be dropped.
Hmm, yeah, so just making sure that it's not just the dollar value that we're looking at, you know, yeah, so.
I think also councillor Augustine, the, given dot point three, dot point two and dot point three on that same page, it highlights the cooperation that we do need from the sporting clubs to make this work, and I don't mean cooperation with respect to finance, although that may be something we need to discuss with them, but more so that manual intervention that is required in the lead up to an event, so that they do drop the, someone does drop the fences, whose responsibility is that, will it be councillor, or will the sporting club themselves assist with that either solely or in part?
Yeah, well, Ipswich Knights have had them for three years and they've been able to, you know, we can't, yeah.
Ipswich Knights have been very proactive, yes.
In that sort of stuff, so yeah, I'm just, yeah, just trying to work out going forward, a good way to make sure that, yeah, we, when we assess it, we assess everything, not just a dollar, yeah, thank you for that question, um, I don't know, Mr Pole, I've got another question I'll ask, it's, it's about the electricity box, I understand, yes, raising it fifty thousand to raise it potentially, just to clean it out, again, intangible, the, when the box is damaged, the, the lighting to the field, the lighting to the canteen, to the, to the actual facility, that might not have a dollar value on it, um, do we, can we take into consideration this, this, I don't know, if we can say the speed of how we get back to playing, get back to business, get back to whatever for the actual venue that's affected? Because last time, I've just, I've just, my advice is that last time, that when the, the box was damaged, the field, the field couldn't be lit for three weeks, and then also their, their canteen, all of those sort of things were affected, so for, for a club to be out of action for three weeks is quite detrimental, and again, intangible value, that can't be measured by a dollar, I suppose, you know, yeah, so just seeing that that is, that we factor that into the consideration of that dollar value as well, yeah.
Yes, through the chair, for sure, all of those tangible and intangible benefits will be taken into account when looking at that.
Aye.
Um, I think the issue, particularly with the raising of the, um, electrical switchboards, goes beyond whether or not they can be lifted above the.
Flood.
Flood height.
Yeah.
Um, because you've then got accessibility issues associated with getting to that switchboard if, if you need to as well, so there are a, a lot of factors in relation to that, the interesting thing that I found was that it appeared as though, um, to rectify the one at Knights for instance, was about seven thousand dollars, which surprised me, how little that, well, seven thousand dollars is not necessarily a little fee, but by comparison to the fifty thousand to elevate it, it wasn't what I personally thought was something that required us to look at that any further, but I guess we can have ongoing discussions about that, I think the fence issue in many respects is probably just as important too, and, and one we can probably deliver in time.
Yeah, I do see the, the electrical boxes, yeah, if it's fifty thousand compared to seven, but then if we can make sure that, it's, you know, in a timely fashion, we get them back to, to playing, that can be a, a cost that we can alleviate, I wouldn't think, I didn't really think it was going to be that amount, um, to be able to raise it, but yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy for it to stay low if it was that difference in, in pricing. Hmm, aye, thank you.
Is there any further questions of the officers? Yes, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, acknowledging firstly, the discussion that's taken place so far, obviously there is an element of considering the recovery of these assets on a case by case basis and, and balancing with council's resources and budget as well as QRA funding, however, I'd just like to note that it was my understanding, certainly after going through twenty two and, and what Knights faced then, just as an example, with regard to QRA funding, build back better just isn't a concept out there on its own, that, that was part of the programme rolled out alongside QRA funding, there is an expectation or an element of that project, of those funds that grant, that we won't just keep building back the same, in fact, I think we received advice that the state government won't continue to fund, for instance, River Hart Parkland, building it back each time for it to, to flood again, so, yeah, I would absolutely question or query the need to apply for separate grant funding to build back better, I think that is already within the terms and conditions of the QRA funding, and I think it's something we need to consider around our obligations and, and the response we provide using the QRA funding for individual assets, and, and so my mind goes back to twenty two with that electrical box, and I seem to recall that it did need to go up higher, or was planned to go up higher, but, but that didn't happen, and again, I accept it's, it's budget and it's case by case basis and getting these assets fixed and up and running for the community ASAP, but I think there is an element, an expectation by the state, build back better is, is absolutely part of how we respond to fixing these assets. And, and maybe that can just come back as another question on notice?
Yeah, I think we should take that on notice and we'll come back to you on that, we'll clarify the terms of the funding and just make sure we haven't misinterpreted that in terms of the recovery works that were done.
Yeah.
So we'll confirm, thank you Chair.
Thank you. So if I recall, the, the recommendation is to receive a note.
Oh Chair.
Oh yes, sorry, my apologies councillor.
I've got a question about another item on the report, it's to do with the Ivan Marsden cricket fields, I noticed that it says in the report that the external fence which is on Ulthornborough Road was damaged in twenty twenty two but collapsed in twenty twenty five floods, given that it's an external fence, I'm just wondering if there's some urgency to get that repaired, given the nefarious conduct that some people do with cricket fields, you know, I'm concerned that an external fence at Ivan Marsden can be accessed, and I'd suggest there's some urgency to replace that fence.
Can we get a status on that fence if that's all right?
Yeah.
Do anyone know?
Take that on notice.
Take it on notice, thank you. Any further questions? So the recommendation is to receive a note, so would someone like to move, thank you councillor Madden and seconded councillor Augustine, thank you, any discussion? No, no further discussion, I'll put the recommendation to the vote, all those in favour, that's all hands raised in the room, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Oh councillor Madsen we have online as well, my, but he's not a member of the committee from, so he's observing, so I'll just note that councillor Madsen is observing this morning. Item two, response to petition for maintenance to grass areas, garden beds, corner of Carpenter and Tragona Drive, Ripley, are there any questions of the officers in relation to that matter? Open up to questions for the observer, being that it is, I believe it's in your division, councillor Madsen, do you have any questions?
All good, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions, the recommendations two, A is, council continue to provide services according to our current maintenance schedules, standards, and B, council notify the petitioner of the outcome and the maintenance standards for that location, a mover please, moved by councillor Augustine, seconded by councillor Doyle, any discussion? Yes councillor Augustine?
Thanks councillor Antonelli, as this one is in division one and the area that is, that pertains to the petition, I actually went down there last week or the week before, can't remember, one of the two, and the maintenance that the crews did were actually exceptional, and the area looks fantastic, so, yeah, so well done to the crew that went and kept that place, that area, it does back on to, uh, the one, in particular this part here into like drains and.
Oh yes.
Real, um.
Detention basins?
Yeah, that sort of thing, and so, but yeah, no, looks spectacular the area, so thank you very much and well done to the crew.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? All those in favour of the recommendation, all hands are up in the room, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
That is unanimous, item three is confirmation of the minutes, is there any, before I move that they be accepted as accurate reflection, is there any amendments or omissions that need to be corrected? I'll move that the minutes of the twenty second of April two thousand and twenty five be received and adopted as an accurate reflection of that event, thank you, seconded by councillor Doyle, any discussion, there being no further discussion, all those in favour, all hands raised in the room, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
Thank you, that's unanimous, item four refers to the Waterworks partnership agreement, are there any questions in relation to this report, questions of officers, general manager? Any questions from councillor Johnic or Martin?
I'm good, thanks.
No further questions, the recommendations are the council not enter into a new agreement and that we inform Waterworks Limited that the agreement has ceased in accordance with memorandum of understanding, I'll move that motion, is there a second please, seconded councillor Augustine, any discussion? Councillor Johnic, any discussion, councillor Martin?
No thanks Chair.
I'm good, thanks.
There being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, all those in favour, all hands up in the room, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
That's unanimous, item five is the asset and infrastructure services department capital delivery report for March, are there any questions of the officers? Okay, I'll just, one question if I can just ask of the GM, note that obviously this was a difficult time for council because this was in the midst of tropical cyclone Alfred, and I see that it has had an impact on our delivery of a number of projects, and obviously our typical budget spend for that month would have been on a number of capital works items, so I guess my question is, how are we faring now, since tropical cyclone Alfred, after all our work is so much completed there for the immediate work that is, how are we progressing with the works programme towards the end of this financial year, will we be in, how are we going I guess, yeah?
Thank you Chair, the next month's financials have actually come through and we have caught up a lot on our spend for the year, the projects that, that were delayed, we do expect to catch up on those and finish them just later, but still in the, most, most of them will still be this financial year.
Very good, I take it that anything that's been committed and isn't complete, obviously owing to tropical cyclone Alfred, will just continue into the new financial year, but those funds will be obviously committed?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? There being no further questions, the recommendation is that the report be received and noted, I'll move that report, can I have a second please, councillor Tully, thank you, discussion? I just want to, again, just highlight the fact that the works programme for the month was lower than the forecast spend for the month, as the report highlights, the monthly expenditure of five point two eight million was compared to, a much lower compared to the budget of eight point four nine million, the disruptions that were caused owing to tropical cyclone Alfred were obviously significant, and I'm sure that our community is understanding of that, it impacted a number of construction activities, obviously our staff had to be redeployed elsewhere for the preparation, response and recovery of tropical cyclone Alfred, but it's pleasing to note that we will and we are virtually caught up on those programmes, which is very good, so I just want to commend our staff for their work during, again, tropical cyclone Alfred, but catching up on those works to date, so that's very pleasing, so, and there's, there are a number of projects that are highlighted in that report, which I won't speak to at this moment, but will speak to obviously in next week's council meeting, but very pleasing, and just want to commend the staff through you, Miss Mackenzie, about the, how they've gone about recovering from tropical cyclone Alfred and catching up with our capital works delivery, thank you. Is there any further discussion, there being no further, no, sorry, there being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, receive a note, the report, all those in favour, that's all, hands up in the room, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
That's carried unanimous, thank you, I think we're now up to item six, thank you, Miss Mackenzie, and I ask general manager for planning and regulation to come forward. Okay, all good. Uh, item six, adoption of Ipswich city plan two thousand and twenty five and our L GIP, uh, two thousand and twenty five, local government infrastructure plan. Um, are there any questions of the officers? Councillor Doyle, first off the rank.
Um, thank you Chair, good morning, Mr Davy. Um, I feel like it's a bit of an anticlimax, there's so many steps. I mean, we did this work and, um, it will eventually come into effect, but there's a lot of, um, steps along the way. Anyway, I'm still excited. I just want clarification around condition four, if I may, um, the flood risk and overland flow, um, overlay frequently get questions from residents around the mapping and, and their thoughts on whether it's accurate or not with respect to their property. So I note that condition four says that ensure that the flood risk and overland flow overlay map contains the most up to date information about the risk to life and or property. Um, and timing within twelve months from commencement. Do we have a more precise date when certainly firstly councillors might be made aware and then when that information will be made available to the public?
Through the chair, uh, we don't have a precise date on that, but, uh, this will be an ongoing, uh, challenge for us but for other councils in that flooding information is, uh, more complex than it's ever been. It changes relatively rapidly and, uh, we're going to have to have some, uh, considerable diligence to maintaining and monitoring our systems and the level of, um, information available to the community. So, uh, I'd also note that the, the condition says ensure, so, uh, there will be some review required to determine if there is further changes to accommodate that, uh, condition. But, uh, ultimately, we will need to develop a, a routine frequency of how we keep these up to date. And of course, uh, ha- all of our offices having been intimately involved with the community engagement on this, this was clearly their number one issue for people. Um, the, the differences of people's experience saying, hey, it flooded in these conditions or in these events uh, versus having a theoretical line that factors in climate change is a complex difference. Uh, and it's not lost on us the effect that these decisions have on individuals.
Hmm. Um, certainly, um, as, as we've discussed at length, overland flow, um, has been, um, you know, somewhat contentious in the community. Um, people's minds seem to go to riverine flooding only, but we know that there with the overland flow, um, it can be just as dangerous. Um, Mr Davy, can you give me some examples of the data and the different surfaces we will tap into? Um, you know, we, there's near maps, for example. What is that data that we will continually look at to update this along the way?
So historically, um, the, the base data for the flood model is based upon terrain and that's obtained, uh, through a LiDAR system, so satellite imagery and, uh, flights taken of, of, uh, terrain. Those, uh, that data is more available now than it ever has been before. So for example, near map has access to the data, there's other mapping providers as well. Um, of course, we get our own data too.
Yeah.
So that sets the, the base conditions of what the land looks like, the shape of the land. Uh, and in addition to the more frequent flyovers and more frequent data, it's actually a lot more accurate than it used to be. Uh, then on top of that, you overlay the complexity of the flood models. So, uh, flood modelling today and the data that's gone into the planning scheme looks at a range of different scenarios and some of them are theoretical scenarios based upon the potential for a certain rain event, uh, and on top of that, that rain event or a series of rain events and climate change. So that all has to be factored into the models. And that gives you essentially a series of levels, um, of what type of flooding would occur in those different events. And, uh, because of the availability of that information and the, uh, requirements of the, the latest state requirements on, uh, flooding, that also picks up areas of flow, as you've pointed out, where people assume that it might be rising water from a creek or a gully. But, uh, in many cases in Ipswich, people will have experienced stormwater flow, which might be fast. It might not be super deep, it might only be three or four hundred millimetres, but it's enough to potentially cause a risk to property, damage to property and land, and more, most importantly, a risk to people. And so we overlay all of that data to then look at, well, what's the, the risk of, of developing in these areas? What's the risk to people and to property? And use that information to make decisions for the future. And, and sometimes that's a tough decision in terms of, you, you're identifying that someone's property that they may have lived on for forty years has, uh, a flow path that may be dangerous, may have flood depth that's a problem in the event of those types of floods. And of course, some of those people have adapted their lives to address those issues. But, um, you know, one reflection for me is there are a category of people that adapt to these things naturally. Um, but there are, there are, it comes a time when those people can no longer adapt or they choose to move. And then you've got a new batch of people moving into those areas that haven't experienced that history. They don't appreciate the impacts of it. And, uh, as part of the planning scheme is making sure that everyone has access to the best information they can to make those decisions.
And just in relation to your point, that was going to be my final question. You, you mentioned ensuring everyone has, um, property owners and prospective buyers of a property and new buyer, um, access to all of that information. I recall during one of our sessions over the last couple of years when we talked about, um, you know, the, the flood mapping and the overland flow, what a property search might reveal um, to a prospective buyer. And of course, we had some property owners, um, arguing that it'll make their property unsellable or, you know, it will devalue it. And there was, am I correct, there was work underway at this, with the state and other local governments to establish a standard flood search precedent that would be used?
Uh, yes, and I, maybe I'll, um, not represent this appropriately, my colleagues may better represent this, but essentially, um, providing access to the community of flood information that's easy to interpret is really important. So the planning scheme has a search tool in itself where people can look up their property and get data on their property. Uh, but we have been working on a, a new system. And if you have a look at the current flood awareness systems that we have, they're relatively static. There's a bit of data push there, um, but, uh, they're relatively static. And so the idea is that we will have a more accessible system that's easier to interpret so that people can understand, um, the, the issues that they may need to contend with if their property floods.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, yes, councillor Madden?
Thanks Chair. Um, uh, thanks, uh, Mr Davy. Uh, I'm just gonna ask you a question about the study currently being done with regard to the Western corridor and the urban footprint. Uh, will that, when that's concluded, will that have any impact on this plan? Or will that be a matter for the city plan for two thousand and twenty six?
Uh, thank you councillor, so through the chair, yes, we will, uh, we are undertaking a planning study on the Western corridor. So that's essentially the corridor from Rosewood through to, um, Balloun and Thuguna. Uh, so that study may reveal, uh, changes and improvements that we can make to the planning scheme. And so whilst the planning scheme goes, is intended to go live on the first of July, um, it's all, in all likelihood, we will have an amendment package to deal with whatever the outcomes of that planning study are. And that, the intention of that will be to influence development in that corridor, uh, in the right way. At the moment, most of that corridor is zoned for a, a more detailed planning exercise to occur. So it's, uh, largely in a, an emerging zone, emerging community, which flags that there is development in the area. Uh, it flags a relative footprint of that, but it also flags that there's more studies required and we're doing those studies now.
Thanks, Mr Davy.
Any further questions? Councillor Johnick and Martin?
No further questions, thanks Chair.
Um, very good, thanks.
Thank you, uh, there is significant, um, that, and this is a significant report, obviously, because this is, um, the formal adoption of, uh, our planning scheme, the going forward. Um, and, uh, and I'll, I'll speak to it further after we've moved, uh, the recommendations. But, um, this is not, uh, a report that we take lightly as a council. And obviously during next week's council meeting, it's obviously going to be, come up for quite a, a deal of discussion as well. So I will read the recommendations, um, for the record. Um, uh, and there are a number of them. Um, oh, but, but actually before I do that, and I, I do wish to ask a question in relation to recommendation L, um, on that, um, which re- refers to the declared malls. Um, uh, so couns- in, in the recommendation, it says council adopt mall designations for Nicholas Street Mall. Uh, can you just speak to that as to what that actually means? Um, and I know we had a personal discussion yesterday in relation to this, but, um, just for those that, um, will hear the recommendation read, if you can just give a, a bit of a precis of what that actually means and why we do this.
Uh, yeah, of course. And, uh, before I jump into that, just want to offer to the councillors whether they'd like an overview of, um, the engagement programme uh, in today's meeting. And I could call Nathan to the lectern if that would, uh, be a benefit to the, the councillors, given some of the focus of the questions on community awareness today.
I was going to speak to that in discussion because I, I note the number of submissions that we received and, and the level of submission that was done. Um, I don't see any need for us to, um, speak to it much further than that. Um, but, um, but I do appreciate, who, who was it you, Nathan was it?
Yes, Nathan's in the, the gallery.
Sorry, I can't see because of the chair there, Nathan. Um, but, uh, I do appreciate your attend- and appreciate greatly the work you've done in helping to compile this too, and you and your team.
So yes, for that, uh, recommendation, um, Chair, the, the core, uh, of that is the current planning scheme has a designation of this, um, Nicholas Street precinct. Uh, the purpose of the designation is to, uh, align with our, um, regulations and enforcement, particularly with local laws. Uh, and that is to firstly declare that this area is a mall, uh, under the Local Government Act. And then that enacts certain provisions in our local laws for us to be able to, uh, regulate these areas appropriately. Um, it's, it's a, it's a normal process now for these to be included in planning schemes. And so the reason why this is specifically a recommendation in assistance is, uh, it's in the current planning scheme. If we were to replace the current planning scheme and not include a designation on the, the new scheme, then we've, that ability to regulate certain activities would fall away. Uh, and just as one example, um, you know, smoking regulation.
Thank you.
Um, some parking regulation, those sorts of things. So, uh, we've, we've got that in place for a continuity of regulation in the precinct.
So thank you, um, Mr Davy. So with respect, um, obviously pretty easy to understand that Tolma Place itself is, looks like a mall area, but we, but Nicholas Street still has a, a roadway, uh, just a single lane roadway. So how is it that it can remain as a pedestrian mall, so to speak?
Yes, so, uh, the Nicholas Street itself is, uh, I suppose, a, a different look and feel from historic as well as Darcy Doyle Place. So if we look at Nicholas Street, that's a shared zone. And so there are exemptions for, um, vehicles to traverse in that, uh, that precinct, uh, at certain times. And obviously there's a level of control at the top end of the precinct for that to occur. Uh, so it operates slightly differently from that perspective that at times it's open to traffic, uh, as a shared zone, uh, as opposed to Darcy Doyle Place and Tolma Place, which aren't open to traffic for obvious reasons.
Did you have a question councillor?
Just a question about Union Place Mall, does that remain a mall?
Uh, it is included in the Nicholas Street Mall designation. So the Union Place, uh, as a name still exists, but it's only a short stub. So for, uh, convenience, we've, um, done some collective naming of that precinct, which is, uh, there's attachments that outline the extent of those. And so the collective areas across those two designations include Tolma Place, uh, Union Place, Nicholas Street, Darcy Doyle Place and the, uh, so shattered laneways along Nicholas Street as well as the precinct.
And, and Bottle Alley?
And Bottle Alley, as well as, uh, there's a lane way in behind Indian Mayfield between that building and the art gallery.
I'm just, uh, unclear about that, like, um, the, this current documentation, which the council publishes, talks about the Union Place Mall. Um, has that been renamed? Um, renamed?
No, no.
Well, then paragraph L of the recommendation, um, doesn't refer to Union, uh, Place Mall.
No, it's, it's been named as the Nicholas Street Mall as a collective to include Tolma, uh, Union and Nicholas. So there hasn't been a renaming, Union Place only extends up, uh, between Bell Street and the front edge of this building. So I, I suppose for completeness, if, um, the council were, uh, had a preference to, we wouldn't just call it the Nicholas Street Mall, we'd add all of those other, um, places or the names of those, um, malls, laneways into that naming. So this is a collective and it's supported by a, a map, so there's a map attached which outlines all of the areas in the declaration.
I'm always reluctant to, to make too many amendments and detailed ones, you know, on, on the move, but between now and, and I'm supportive of the recommendation, but paragraph L, I wonder between now and, um, you know, is it possible to ju- just call it the, uh, have a generic description rather than, um, you know, to cover, um, each of the malls, but that, make it clear that they retain their own name?
Yeah, happy to look at that and we can exchange some information and settle whatever that looks like before the council meeting, if that's your preference.
Should we dub it precinct, uh, Nicholas Street Mall precinct as opposed?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm suggesting, but, um, es- especially with a technical legal document, um, um, there, there's always the risk that we, we don't get it a hundred percent right. So I'll, I'll be supportive of this, but if it, that can be, uh, looked at over the next few days just to, uh, you know, retain the identity of each of the malls. Thank you.
Couldn't, um, so can I ask you to circulate that, um, document and the mapping so that we can have a clear understanding of that, Mr Davy?
Of course, thank you. And some rationale behind the naming.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I'll read through the recommendations and that, there are a number of them. Uh, the council adopt the plan, uh, as amended, uh, to comply with the ministerial conditions, uh, and the minister's guidelines and rules. Uh, B is that we adopt the local government infrastructure plan as part of the Ipswich City Plan two thousand and five. Um, council set commencement date, and this is the important one, the commencement date for the Ipswich City Plan to be the first of July two thousand and five and also the local government infrastructure plan. Uh, the council authorised the chief executive officer to make any minor or administrative amendments as necessary to the plan prior to its commencement. Uh, that council authorised the chief executive officer to undertake the necessary actions to publicly notify the adoption of the Ipswich City Plan, including the local government infrastructure plan in accordance with the chief executive notice and minister's guidelines. Uh, council provide the chief executive of the Department of State Development Infrastructure and Planning with a copy of those public notices. Um, that council adopt the Springfield Structure Plan, obviously I'm being brief in my, how I'm reading these out, but just for, um, um, public reference. Uh, council adopt the Springfield Infrastructure, sorry, Springfield Structure Plan, um, as per attachment six. Uh, that council set commencement date of the first of July for the Springfield Structure Plan. The council authorised the CEO to undertake the necessary actions to facilitate the implementation and commencement of the Ipswich City Plan and Springfield Structure Plan on the first of July. That council repeal implementation guidelines one through to thirty five that support the current Ipswich planning scheme to take effect at the time the Ipswich City Plan two thousand and twenty five commences. Uh, that council in accordance with section eight of the Building Regulation, adopt the building assessment provisions uh, of the Ipswich City Plan. And finally, the council adopt mall designations for Nicholas Street Mall and Darcy Doyle Place as declared malls. Um, for the purposes of section eighty of the Local Government Act. That's a brief, um, review of those recommendations. Um, I will move those recom- move the recommendations seconded by, um, councillor Augustine. Got her hand up first, sorry councillor Doyle. Um, is there any further discussion? Uh, councillors Johnick and Martin, any discussion? Just for my reference?
No, thanks.
I just want to read.
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, I just want to, uh, touch on the fact that this has been a long process. Obviously, the, uh, the existing planning scheme that we operate under here in Ipswich was originally, um, took effect in April of two thousand and four. Now, most people would not be aware that a planning scheme is a living and breathing document. It does receive numerous amendments in its life. Um, that was further consolidated in January two thousand and six. But I do recall, and councillor Tully, you were the planning chair at the time, back when that, uh, when our current planning scheme took effect. It was an award winning scheme at the time, if I do remember correctly. It was an award-winning scheme at the time, if I do remember correctly. And I see you nodding. Thank you for your agreement. Um, I do note in the report you've stipulated, Mr. Davies, that the, there's, there were only three southeast Queensland regional plans commencing two thousand and seventeen. But I do recall there was a southeast Queensland regional plan during the time of Premier Beatty, which was prior to that. And I do recall that, um, there were quite lengthy discussions between our council and the premier and department of the time. That even though our, um, two thousand and four planning scheme was an award-winning scheme, it meant nothing without, without a southeast Queensland regional plan. So it was, uh, effective in helping the state move towards that at the time. Uh, these are living and breathing documents. I do recall that back in two thousand and sixteen, when I became the Chair of Planning at the time. Discussion commenced then about the need for the council to take on a new planning scheme. And I remember having discussions with the then, uh, GM, I guess, if we want to use the equivalent, um, role that you have now, uh, Mr. Davies. That this plan was to be a user-friendly plan, something that could be, uh, looked at by online and was very user-friendly. I'm pleased to see that this plan, um, has adopted that framework. Um, the only thing that held us back from undertaking that at the time was that the state government was, I understand, um, if I recall correctly. Looking towards some, uh, universal, um, methodology and, uh, descriptors for, with respect to zones. And we had to wait for that to come through, or else we would have had a planning scheme with, uh, that needed to be amended almost immediately. So, um, very pleasing to see that this was something that went out, uh, to extensive public consultation. Something I also raised at the time with then, uh, the then General Manager, um, John Adams. And there were over, or five hundred submissions at the time. So that was, um, shows that the public took a great interest. In this document, this, uh, future plan for our city. So, um, obviously we'll speak more to this at the council meeting. But, uh, this is an incredibly important document. I wish to take this opportunity again to commend all the staff. Of the Planning and Development Department, but in particular, uh, our planners in, um, uh, who I can't see again. All I can see is just your nose and above. Um, so our planning team, just thank you very much for the work. Hard work that you've put in, in bringing this document to fruition and to this committee this day in preparation for its commencement on the first of July this year. Any further discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, uh, thanks very much. Uh, it has been a long time coming, but, uh, I recall at the time that the officers indicated that our, uh, previous, uh, plan. Uh, did have some advantages, uh, that we were able to, uh, utilise. Um, implementation guidelines, which are disappearing, were certainly a very valuable, uh, tool, um, I believe, uh, in, in, uh, for offices and the, uh, uh, community. Uh, in being able to, um, literally implement, um, guidelines, uh, for the interpretation and application of the town plan, as it was called. Councillor Antonelli has referred to this as a living document. I've raised previously, and I think it's been generally agreed, the importance of. A possibly having an annual review or at least a periodic review of a, of a plan. Um, because there will be changes that will be, uh, required or, or certainly desired. And that, that'll come to light, uh, particularly in the first year or so. Uh, it might be from our own assessment of applications. It might be from, um, the development industry. It could be from, um, um, smaller developments by individuals in the community. So I, I think we should, um, ensure that that annual review, um, at least annually, um, would, would take place. But consideration be given at any time to any amendments that we think are important enough to, um, be considered for, um, changes to the, uh, city plan. Um, thank you councillor Antonelli for reading all twelve elements of the, uh, of the, in his motion. I look forward to a repeat of that at next week's, uh, council meeting. Um, I'm sure councillor Doyle would appreciate that as much as other councillors would. Um, it is a very detailed document. We've had a lot of discussions, a lot of involvement, a lot of community involvement and bringing something like this to fruition. Um, without the tens of thousands of objections which other councils in Queensland have had, um, to some of their, uh, town plans, as I still generically, uh, call them. But congratulations, uh, Brett, to you and to your staff. Um, it, it's been a long time in coming and the first of July twenty twenty-five will be a momentous day for this city.
Any further discussion? I'll just, uh, thank you councillor Tully on that. Yes, uh, I just felt that reading out those recommendations shows that it's not just an easy process. Of adopting a, um, adopting a planning scheme and, and just, um, also refer to the fact that the last planning scheme. We had a population of a hundred and thirty thousand and now we have exactly double that of two hundred and sixty thousand people. So, uh, generally worthy of a new planning scheme. Uh, CEO, you wish to add something, did you?
Would you indulge me? Can I just, Chair, thank you, uh, to you and to, um, councillor Tully and other councillors who have thanked, uh, the staff members involved. Just like to, to briefly add that, as you've noted, uh, as you're very fully aware, this is indeed a momentous, um, occasion. Noting it will go to council, uh, in due course in the very near future. But, uh, that this has been a multi- multiple department, multiple team effort. It has been truly a collaboration across the organisation over many years, as, as noted, several years. So huge amount of work, as is fitting for such an important document that will have such an impact on our city in, in shaping it, uh, going forward. Noting the population growth that we are indeed expecting and, and receiving. Um, but absolutely, uh, confirming that we will make the amendments, you know, with your approval, as is required to ensure that it is a contemporary plan. That continues to do our very best to meet the needs of the city. But Chair, just wanted to mark the, uh, the true collaboration across the, across the council team. Thank you, Chair.
Very good. Thank you, CEO. And, uh, yes, it is a very momentous occasion. Um, the Bible for our city for going forward. Um, okay, uh, if there's no further discussion, I put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? That's all hands up in the room. Councillors Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
That is unanimous. Uh, item seven, um, exercise, uh, delegation report. Any questions, uh, of officers in relation to this matter? Any questions, councillors Johnic and Martin?
No, thanks, Chair.
Just ask, um, the GM while you're here. Is, um, our new manager development planning present today? I can't see.
Uh, he's not in the gallery. He had a, a meeting conflict, unfortunately.
Fair enough. Roger that. Um, if there's no, uh, questions, uh, the, it is a receive and note report. Um, I will move the report second to please councillor Doyle. Um, any discussion? There being no further discussion. All those in favour? All hands up in the room. Councillors Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Item eight, um, Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report, recognising that this is a court matter. These are court matters. Um, any, are there any questions that re- that require the closure of the meeting at all? Any questions at all? Councillors Johnic, councillors Ma- councillor Martin?
No.
It is a receive a note report. Um, I'll move the motion second to please councillor Tully. Thank you. Um, discussion? Yes, councillor, uh, Tully?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, I think this is the lowest number of appeals that we've, um, that I can recall over many years. At, 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 uh, one committee meeting or council meeting, two appeals, one at, uh, Riverview, one at Yamato, one scheduled for, uh, uh, review. Um, as part of ongoing discussions at the end of this month and one in early August. That is an extraordinary situation. Um, we've got down to, I think, three or four or five recently. I think two is definitely the lowest. But what it does, uh, indicate, and I know from, uh, other larger cities in Queensland, either bigger than us or, or similar to our, our population. There are often many, many appeals ongoing in the Planning and Environment Court. And, um, it takes a, a particular, um, process to ensure that, um, matters are sorted with the developers. And I use the word developers covering, um, all large developers and, um, mum and dad developers and small subdivisions perhaps. But that's, uh, an extraordinary result because, um, figures will show that most councils have many, many, many appeals ongoing at one time. They don't all result in major hearings and they can be resolved, but to bring it down to two, I think it's a, um. A, um, you know, a record that, you know, is, you should be very proud of. Can I just use an analogy though? Um, and it, it's, uh, I just hasten to add, I remember one person in the radio industry, they were on top. It was actually Four IP. Uh, the old Ipswich radio station, they were on top of the ratings for many years. And they said, it's great to be on top, but there's only one way you can go after that. And, uh, I just, just, we, you never know. You never know with a new planning scheme what appeals might be lodged, what might be, um, um, ar- arguments that may be, be used in a period of time. So, but I think we can take some real solace that in, uh, at this period of, uh, you know, time, that having two appeals is something quite extraordinary in Queensland for a council of our size.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, just on that councillor Tully, it's, it's interesting to note that they're not necessarily against us as a council. One is a third party, uh, one is a third party appeal and the other is, um, uh, in relation to, uh, conditions imposed by. Um, a DTMR. So, um, it is interesting, uh, that that's what we have rather than, um, specifically a developer. Uh, appealing against a decision. So, um, thank you for your feedback, uh, councillor Tully. And, um, I guess recognition of the staff's efforts in that regard. Any further? Oh, yes, councillor Matt?
I just want to say in my understanding, the DTMR is a consent order. Is that right?
Uh, the appellant, or sorry, through the chair, the appellant will be likely seeking a consent order with changed conditions. Um, that could, you know, if there isn't an agreement between the parties, that could still proceed to trial as with any of these matters, but.
Maybe a consent order. Hmm, very good. Very good. Uh, that is a receive a note. Uh, I'll, um, um, move the motion. Um, second, councillor Tully, uh, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favour? That's four hands up in the room. Uh, councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
Thank you. That's unanimous. That's the end of the items on the, uh, per se, uh, reports on the agenda. Uh, notices of motion, I don't believe there are any. Uh, no matters arising. Um, might, um, ask, and thank you, uh, Mr. Davies for your, um, support here, but I might, uh, ask to suspend standing orders. So that we can, um, discuss openly, uh, the matter pertaining to the Mount Crosby, um, interchange and overpass and the. Mount Crosby Road, sorry, interchange, overpass. Um, and I'll move that. Can I have a second, uh? Thank you councillor Tully. Uh, all those in favour? Uh, councillor Johnic, oh, that's four hands up in the room. Councillor Johnic?
Affirmative.
Uh, councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Uh, that's unanimous. Uh, uh, if I could ask General Manager, um, Sarah Mackenzie to come forward again, please. Um, might be easier at the lecturn, um, Miss Mackenzie? Thank you. Um, could you, uh, give us a bit of an update as to what you know in relation to the event that happened over the weekend and where we are at now? Uh, particular reference, I guess, more so for us as local councillors, the local impacts it's had.
Thank you. So through the chair, um, as everyone would be aware, there was an unfortunate incident with, um, the overpass, Mount Crosby Road on the Warrigo Highway. On Friday and, uh, TMR was able to work very quickly and effectively and get that removed on Friday night. And then do further work to open up the, that lane of the highway on Saturday night. Um, uh, Sunday night, yes, sorry. And that, that lane is now open, so that's improving traffic. Um, and then this morning they were able to, at six o'clock, uh, half past six, open the one lane of the overpass. So the northbound lane is now open at, um, that site and is hopefully improving traffic. However, we've been monitoring impacts on our local network over the weekend. Staff have been working to, over the weekend and working very closely with TMR. On those local impacts. We've obviously seen more impacts as we've moved into the work week. So TMR, uh, saw some significant impacts at the Colo Road overpass and were able to get QPS assistance yesterday afternoon during peak hour. On both the north and southern side of that overpass to manage traffic. My understanding is it flowed a lot better once QPS were there. And TMR, um, are hoping to have QPS there at peak hours, um, in morning and afternoon. Understand there were some issues this morning with availability, um, of QPS to be at site. So it did cause some further, um, traffic concerns on the southern side there. Um, however, they continue to work with QPS to monitor that and work with us to let us know of impacts.
Is it, um, uh, with respect to our local networks, are we seeing any other impacts in relation to this matter?
I'm not aware of any major concerns that have come in. We have seen some on the, um, northern side there through Francis Street. And Robin Street, which is an unsealed road. So we're monitoring that as well to make sure that the road is in good condition. We had some crews out there yesterday just checking that and doing some, some work. Um, apart from that, there has been a bit of queuing as you would expect, um, but nothing further that we, we expect would need traffic control. However, like I said, we're continuing to work with TMR. They're providing full support and taking responsibility for those impacts.
Yeah, just as, um, personal, uh, call I received yesterday, it was taking some fifty plus minutes to get from the Town Bridge. To, um, the Colo Road, uh, overpass, um, which many are believing obviously that to be the, um, the best way back onto the highway. In order to get to, uh, the northern side of that Mount Crosby Road interchange. Is there any other questions anybody has in relation to the matter?
I, I do.
Yes, councillor Augustine?
Um, it's not, it doesn't pertain to the actual accident. You know, we, I think we're all, you sort of hold, um, a view of the driver. I'm just wanting to know if we've got any, because that would have been a, the impact of that would have been horrific. Um, you know, notwithstanding what judgment or, or all of that, that, the speculation out there, but have we got an update on where he's at?
I don't, sorry. I don't have any updates on the driver, sorry.
I am, um, concerned of, um, obviously very fortunate. No one was injured. No one was seriously hurt as a result of this incident. But, um, I'm also cognizant of the fact that, um, the driver has taken, um, quite a deal of, um, flak. Um, particularly through the likes of social media and the like. So I am concerned for the welfare of the driver, um, mentally and physically. So, um, um, I don't see any need for us to speak too much in relation to that. And we'll keep it strictly to the, um, to the impacts if we could. Um, councillor Matt?
Um, Sarah, and it's, it's a concern that, that only one lane is open and it has a weight restriction on it. Is there any feedback from, uh, TMR that, um, this may be a permanent situation and the weight limit may continue?
Um, through the chair, uh, TMR are aware of the congestion that it's causing and are working really hard to, to get rectified as soon as possible. They're monitoring that bridge with the current load limits on it and trying to work through that as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any further questions? Questions from councillor Johnic, councillor Martin?
No, thanks, Chair.
Councillor Martin, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thanks. Just, yeah, moving forward, they said potentially end of the week, two lanes. That's pretty optimistic, isn't it?
Is that a question? Or a statement?
Yes.
Yes. So, I don't know how to answer that. Um, uh, uh, obviously that's the feedback you've received thus far from TMR?
Correct. I haven't received any feedback about the opening of the, of the second lane yet.
Look, um, I think, I think it goes without saying, oh, sorry, uh, yes, councillor Matt?
I think that might relate to a statement made by the, um, Minister Brent Mickelberg when he came up and did a, uh, press conference. And indicated by the end of next week, the bridge would be open. But he didn't say two lanes would be open. He simply said the bridge would be open. And it opened earlier than that. But I don't think we should be reading any more into it than the fact that the bridge would be open by the end of next week. And fortuitously it was opened yesterday.
Yes, yeah. I, I think councillor George, you wish to say something, did you? Oh, sorry. Having, having gone out and inspected the, um, personally gone out and had a look at the site, the, um, um, the. The bridge did take an enormous amount of force from that vehicle. You can actually see the cracks in the bitumen. That I believe have been formed by the, um, by the collision. Um, so, uh, I think that TMR have done a wonderful job. But by comparison to the last overpass in Ipswich that was struck by a vehicle that was closed. in Ipswich that was struck by a vehicle that was closed for many, many months and caused enormous disruptions, at least TMR are taking a more proactive approach to this one. But there's no doubt, and I guess it goes without saying, that these disruptions may go on, not just for this week, but in some part they will continue for many, many months. And I think that there's a need for us to seek TMR to look towards some other solutions. I understand that councillor Madden, you may have something to add to this?
Well, I'd like to move the motion in this regard, Chair.
Would you like to read the motion?
Yep. And this is a motion I'd proposed to move and I'd asked that it be seconded. That as a matter of urgency, the Ipswich City Council Chief Executive Officer write to the Queensland Minister for Transport and Main Roads, the Honourable Brent Mickleberg, and requests, sorry Vicky.
Continue.
Do you want me to start again?
No, no, I've given her a copy of what you've sent me actually, councillor Madden.
That as a matter of urgency, the Ipswich City Council Chief Executive Officer write to the Queensland Minister for Transport, the Honourable Brent Brent Mickleberg, and request that the Queensland Government expedite the construction of the proposed Carrollay interchange and the repairs to the westbound Brema River Bridge at Carrollay. And perhaps I should just say a few words.
We will need a second to that and that's seconded by councillor Tully. I'll wait until the motion is fully put.
Sorry Chair, can I just seek some process advice? So Vicky, advice from you if I may, as the meeting as the manager of committee administration. So putting a motion in this way when a meeting is, yes, standing orders are suspended, is this a notice of motion for a future meeting or is a motion able to be put in this way on the floor without notice?
I believe under meeting procedures we can.
Yeah?
I can't remember the actual proceeding number, I think it's.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Let's clarify, did we close the meeting, suspend the standing orders for discussion or to enable a motion to be?
Oh, we did suspend for a discussion, we did.
If it's only for the former, perhaps we we over unsuspend the standing orders, have a second motion to cover the motion. I think that would make it very clear.
Clear, yes, yes.
And I was simply informing the meeting of my intention to move a motion.
Okay, very, that's a good, good save councillor Madden. So I will move that we, thank you, Ms Mackenzie. I will move that we return to standing orders. Do I have a second councillor Tully? All those in favour? Four hands in the room. Councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
I now, that is unanimous, I now move that we suspend standing orders for the hearing of a motion, sorry?
Sorry Chair, I think councillor Madden, unless he's changed his mind, you were just giving notice of a notice of motion at the ordinary coming up, is that correct? I've given notice of a notice of motion previously and we've never needed to suspend standing orders to do that.
We don't need to suspend standing orders, you're correct. We can do that as a as part of general business, a notice of motion. But I will ask, I will ask what councillor Madden's intention is. Are you satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied, I'm asking the motion to be dealt with today, if that's possible, Chair.
Then we will need to vote to suspend standing orders if it is to be a motion considered today. I move that we suspend standing orders for the consideration of motion from councillor Madden. All those in favour? That's four hands in the room. Councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Councillor Ma, councillor Martin, my apologies.
Affirmative.
Thank you. That's unanimous, yes?
Could I clarify if it's four or five in the room?
What did I say?
Well, you've said four most of the day, so I went to another school when I learned grade one.
My apologies, I haven't counted myself perhaps. I thought I said all hands up in the room. As opposed to a number, did I use a number? Well, let's move on. I did declare it as unanimous, so that does include me, of course. So.
Second?
Oh, yes councillor Tully, I believe, yes. Councillor Madden, I'm in your hands.
Well, just with regard to the suspension of standing orders, my motion will include a prelude saying that it's a it's an urgent matter. So I'll now read my motion, that as a matter of urgency, the Ipswich City Council Chief Executive Officer write to the Queensland Minister for Transport and Main Roads, the Honourable Brent Mickleberg, and request that the Queensland Government expedite the construction of the proposed Carrollay interchange and the repairs to the westbound Brema River Bridge at Carrollay. That's my motion.
That motion is moved. I, with your indulgence if I may councillor Tully, I would like to second that motion.
And perhaps.
You'll speak to it, please?
Just the history, obviously, as a former member of Ipswich West, I'm very familiar with the the status of of the Carrollay interchanges and the bridge. Just with regard to the Carrollay in, proposed Carrollay interchange, there was extensive community consultation in two thousand and twenty-three where two options were put forward. Ultimately, one of those options was proposed and that was to build a new interchange as well as doing some minor upgrades to the currently current Mount Crosby interchange. They are two separate interchanges, just for the benefit of people watching or listening. Subsequently, funding was provided, at least in part, from both the state and federal governments. The Department of Transport and Main Roads then said that they would produce the final design by the end of twenty twenty-four. The end of twenty-four has come and gone and we don't have a final design. And then subsequent to this, cracks were found in the Brema River Bridge, which is a steel structure with a concrete deck. So we have two matters and that and funding has been approved from both the state and federal government for the bridge, which is about ninety thousand, ninety million dollars. So we have a situation, we have two projects where there's both funding available from the state and federal governments, but no indication of when either project will actually begin or when we will receive the final design for the new Carrollay interchange. So I'm moving this motion to try and get some urgency from the state government and the Department of Transport and Main Roads to get both these projects going, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. As a second, I'd just wish to note that I said to someone on the weekend during the Ipswich show that there are many, that whilst this has had an enormous impact on our city, just one single incident had an impact on our city, enormous ripple effects. And it highlights the need for the urgency for the new interchange to be constructed, particularly now as this will have extended delays on our city. I did highlight to somebody the fact that there has been perhaps a number of silver linings in relation to this dark cloud and one being the fact that no one was seriously hurt, as I mentioned earlier. Second being that this may bring forward and through this motion, hopefully we can ask the state to very seriously consider as a matter of urgency, the bringing forward of the new interchange. But also I see another silver lining in this matter that it highlights the fact that as we consider our next business case for the second river crossing here in Ipswich, the data from this incident should be considered as part of that matter as well. It should not just be the matter of flooding that is the reason for potentially a second river crossing here in in the centre of the city. But the fact that impacts such as this, as minor as they may be, can have enormous ripple effects and we should be taking a lot of stock and a lot of data from this incident to help support our business case for the second river crossing here in Ipswich, the infamous Norman Street Bridge. But yes, I do implore upon the state, the minister and the department to bring that interchange forward. This incident in itself highlights the very need and the impacts it does have on the city. So we are very well aware of the impact that the existing interchange had in the lead-up to this event, the queuing and the like that occurs and the fact that it has been in many respects inadequate to existing transport and traffic needs. So this incident in itself, hopefully will bring this forward and we implore the state to consider that urgently. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion from councillor Johnick or councillor Martin? Councillor Martin, you may wish to speak to it, your division?
Yes, I agree. We've had councillor Madden and I fielded a number of inquiries and concerns over the weekend. It is pretty disturbing to a lot of residents, in normally quieter streets that have had an influx of cars. People have been held up for a long time. I went there Saturday morning via Dinmore and that was Saturday morning, bearing in mind it was also a public holiday and traffic was backed up for two Ks to avert the westbound lanes. And I also concur with councillor Madden that I'd love to see the new project, the option two, expedited, sorry, expedited. Bit of a tricky word there. Expedited so that we have better outcomes for the residents, particularly those in Carrollay. So I'd like to see that happen. So thank you.
Here, here. Right of reply councillor Madden?
No, I don't have any further second.
Thank you. There being no further discussion, all those in favour? That's all hands up in the room. Councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Councillor Martin?
Yes, affirmative.
That is unanimous. I now move that we return to standing orders. Do I have a second in councillor Augustine? All those in favour? All hands in the room? Affirmative, Johnick, Deputy Mayor Johnick, affirmative, I'm sorry, your vote. Affirmative councillor Martin, that again is unanimous. We return to general business. Is there any further general business? There being no further general business, we've come to the conclusion of the meeting. I just moved that the next meeting, being the time that it is, what would we like, a twenty minute?
Ten fifty?
Ten fifty, yes. That we return for the next meeting, that being finance and governance at ten fifty. All those, you're seconded by councillor Tully. All those in favour? That's unanimous in the room. Councillor Martin?
Affirmative.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much, meeting closed.